I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll please remain standing and join me for the Lord's Prayer if you choose. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. Thank you.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Here.
Ms. Frenchco?
Here.
Here.
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the workshop session dated April twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four, and the regular meeting dated April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, and accept and approve the video recordings of both meetings as the official meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
No.
Item number two is to approve the bills.
Motion to approve the bills?
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number three is to transfer monies.
A motion to transfer monies is listed.
Second the motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number four is to approve additional appropriations.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes, what are the changes from the agenda that was just printed this morning to the one from yesterday?
There was a fund number added to item twenty-five, no, not twenty-five, twenty-eight.
Okay, but everything's still in order.
And item twenty-five was updated. Item number five is to transfer appropriations.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number six is to authorize the purchase of body cameras from Motorola Solutions, Inc. For use by the Trumbull County Sheriff's Office, and the purchase amount is three hundred fifty-two thousand, three hundred ninety-eight dollars and twenty cents.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number seven is to authorize the purchase of Mark's radios from Bear Communications, Inc. For use by the Trumbull County Sheriff's Office. The purchase amount to reprogram and update one hundred and thirty radios will be fifty-three thousand, three sixty-seven, fourteen. The sheriff's office will purchase fifty additional portable radio batteries as current portable radio batteries are in need of replacement. The cost for new batteries will be seven thousand, sixty dollars. The sheriff's office will also purchase ten new Motorola APX eight thousand radios at a total cost of seventy-nine thousand, three hundred ten dollars and fifty-three cents. The total project cost will be one hundred thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred thirty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number eight is to accept the resignation of Mr. Keith Ames from his position of TV inspector, route assistant technician with the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department effective May third, two thousand and twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes, and I'd like to just point out, even when we accept resignations, we put the names of the employees down, and when we're hiring people and making positions for people, oftentimes the human resources sends them over without that, and I believe the board needs to make sure that we have every name whenever there's action taken for hiring.
Item number nine is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special hauling permit to haul steel coils requested by the company listed, P.I. and I Motor Express.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number ten is to concur with the county engineer to close the roadways listed. Larchmont Avenue in Howland Township between Deets Road, Bronze Road, and Overland Avenue intersection for sanitary sewer connection, and that closing date was Tuesday, April twenty-third through Thursday, April twenty-fifth, and Kibler Toot Road in Warren Township near Levitt Road and Kibler Toot Road for bridge replacement. And that closing date is Monday, May sixth, through Friday, June seventh.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number eleven is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special annual supplier fleet permits requested by the property owner and company listed, Daryl L. Rathburn and Bob's Tree Service and Stump Removal LLC.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number twelve is to concur with the county engineer to grant the right-of-way permits requested by the companies listed, Village Energy Cooperative and MJD Excavating.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number thirteen is to establish the creation of the COVID-nineteen Bridge Vaccination Fund, known as Fund nine, seven, eight, for use by the Trumbull County Combined Health District. A notice of award for seventy-five thousand, sixty-seven dollars was received from the Ohio Department of Health.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Did you guys receive any additional information on this? Has the board received any information about this?
It did not, but it's just allowing them to receive a grant that they applied for.
Yeah, and I looked up the grant.
They have their own Board of Health, the Health Board that runs them, and they apparently approved their application, so.
You're on there, so I'm asking you, what grant is this? Because I read, I looked it up, we weren't given anything, I just would like to know more about this, if it's truly just to give COVID-nineteen vaccinations to people. That's what the board, Health Department's been doing?
I don't know, did you ask the director, did you call the director?
You're on the, you're, as the president of the Board of Commissioners, you are representing the board there, so I'm asking you what you have learned by going to those meetings about this.
I'm not aware of exactly what this Fund nine, seventy-eight funds come from.
It's from the COVID Bridge Vaccination Grant.
How do you know that? They're putting into that fund, but is that what the grant's called, the COVID Bridge Vaccination Grant?
You're on the, you're on.
You're Commissioner too. If you want to know, call Frank McGliosey. One phone call.
You're actually on that board, so I'm asking you, because when I looked it up online, it's a grant for the purpose of.
You're on the Planning Commission, you haven't gone to meetings since two thousand and twenty-one. Do you want me to ask you questions about Planning Commission?
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
I'm, okay, you think it's cute, Mauro?
No, this is just normal housekeeping, this is to establish, create a fund. It doesn't matter where the grant came from, this is not that, what we're talking about. We're creating the fund, the funds have already been in there.
Right, I just wanted to find out if he, because he's on that board, knows anything about their efforts to continue to vaccinate people with the same. I mean, it's.
This is a normal accounting procedure, though, this has nothing to do with the grant.
It's been found to not be effective and to have adverse effects on people who have taken it, so if they're still out there.
This is saying.
Yes, but I'm a commissioner, no, this is what the funding for that program is, is for, to continue to vaccinate people with the COVID-nineteen vaccination.
To establish a fund for that.
For that. Yeah, so I'm just wondering why is that still their purpose when it's kind of.
I don't know that that's the purpose, I don't know that you know that that's the purpose, I think you're making an assumption.
No, I looked up what that.
Then why'd you ask the question if you already looked it up and you know the answer?
Find out specifically why they're pursuing that as opposed to other things.
I would take that up probably with the director and their staff.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Um, yes.
Item fourteen is to enter into an amended agreement between the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners and the City of Cortland, as approved by ARPA Legal Counsel, for the city to purchase standby power generators for the city's water supply system as fully described in Exhibit A, and the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners allocates the sum of three hundred thousand dollars to the city. Amendment is necessary to make the accounting dates consistent with each other and in line with more recent agreements. The amended agreement will replace the existing agreement previously authorized by the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners on January tenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number fifteen is to adopt a resolution to proclaim the month of May, two thousand and twenty-four, as Foster Care Month in Trumbull County, Ohio, in conjunction with National Foster Care Month. The Board of Trumbull County Commissioners wishes to honor all foster parents and volunteers who unselfishly give their time and resources to help children by providing them with much-needed love and care, and thanks these individuals for investing in their lives, in the lives of children, thereby giving them hope for a brighter future. Foster parents show their commitment by sharing their lives with children who need safe homes and warm hearts. There are currently fifty-one licensed foster families and approximately one hundred and thirty children in foster and residential care in Trumbull County. The Board also wishes to commend the Trumbull County Children's Services Board for its dedicated service and commitment towards promoting the best interest in the care of foster children throughout Trumbull County.
Make a motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Yeah, we have a resolution here. Would you like to sign that, Commissioner?
Just want to say to the foster parents that are here today, if you can stand and be recognized to, please give them a round of applause. I think it's probably the most selfless act in the world, or one of them that you're doing, and we talk about heroes, and that word is used a lot in our society, but I don't think it anyone is more appropriate to have that term than you guys, so we certainly appreciate what you do. And I know that there's a function we received that's coming up, Marilyn, the date on that, I don't remember. May twenty-first, and we'll be honoring, would you like us to bring the resolution there, would you like to read it here? Okay, we can do that. One of the commissioners, or hopefully all of us can make it there, and we would like to present it there, so. Thank you for the Children's Services Board and all your employees and everything you guys do, we truly appreciate it.
Item number sixteen is to receive and place on file the February and March, two thousand and twenty-four, monthly financial reports for Trumbull County Tourism Bureau.
Make a motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number seventeen is to authorize the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners Clerk to advertise for sealed proposals for community-based services and many grants to be provided to senior citizens, individuals sixty years or older residing in Trumbull County. The service contracts will be for a twenty-four-month period beginning September first, two thousand and twenty-four, and ending August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six.
Make a motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number eighteen is to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Commissioners, to sign a notice to proceed letter for the W.C. Zabel Company doing business as A&amp;N Restaurant Equipment and Supplies for the P.Y. two thousand and twenty-three CDBG Community Development Grant Program, Project One, Activity Two, Senior Centers, Howland Scope Center Kitchen Equipment awarded on March sixth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number nineteen is to authorize change order number two for TK Excavating for the Heat and Shoot Sanitary Lateral Assistance Program for LMI households, funded through the P.Y. two thousand and twenty-two Community Development Block Grant Residential Public Infrastructure Grant Program and the American Rescue Plan Act. The original contracts in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars were awarded on January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Change order number two is necessary as one of the homes located at thirteen eighty-three Heat and Bolivar Niles was sold, and the new owner only qualifies for assistance through the American Rescue Plan Act. Change order number two will keep the total contract amount the same at fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars, but change the funding breakdown to thirty-seven thousand, seven fifteen for five CDBG households and twenty thousand, six oh five for two ARPA households.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number twenty is to accept the change in job status of Cali Beach Full-Time Telecommunicator in the Trumbull County nine-one-one Center to Part-Time Telecommunicator, effective May fifth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Motion to accept the change in job status.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number twenty-one is to authorize Tacey McDonough, Director, Trumbull County nine-one-one Center, to sign contract renewal documents for the nine-one-one network with the existing vendor, Century Link Communications LLC, doing business as Lumen Technologies Group.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number twenty-two is to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of County Commissioners, to execute the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five Ohio Department of Youth Services Juvenile Court Funding Application Update, and to authorize the Trumbull County Juvenile Court to submit the application update to the Ohio Department of Youth Services. The funding application update request will be for the biennial period beginning July first, two thousand and twenty-four, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. The estimated base and variable allocation for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five is one million, fifteen thousand, four hundred, three dollars and forty-one cents.
Also, also, Madam Clerk, just to add to that, special note, at such times as Trumbull County does not receive funding, the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners has no obligation to fund this program, just want to make that clear. Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number twenty-three is to approve the personnel actions for the employment of a total of three candidates, two positions for the Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services, and one position for Trumbull County Child Support Enforcement Agency. The candidates would receive full benefits and will serve a nine-month probationary period. For the Department of Job and Family Services, those candidates are Donald Fellows II and India Howard and Child Support Enforcement Agency Benjamin Washington.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number twenty-four is to approve the personnel action for the promotion of Ms. Lisa Madus as a program administrator, non-bargaining, with the Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services, effective Monday, June first, two thousand and twenty-four. Ms. Madus will be paid thirty-four point eight eight three one per hour with full county benefits, and will serve a nine-month probationary period.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item twenty-five is to enter into a contract with Coats Construction for the new restroom slash building upgrade project located at the Veterans Service Center, located at two five three East Market Street in Warren, in the amount of forty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Motion to.
You said that that one has been changed?
Yes.
Yes, it has.
Okay, let me see the change.
It's incorrect on this copy here, just, I still have the fifty-two, seven, ten.
Oh.
So we need to amend it on our copies, what you read is correct, though.
Yes.
For purposes of discussion, if you'd like, Commissioner, I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
We're discussing, so, okay, what are the changes? What is the purpose for the change?
The lowest bidder instead of the middle bidder, after discussion yesterday with Herm Brewer and maintenance, and there were people from the public and the trades that here that had input.
Yeah, I'm still wondering why Bill Hart never gave me any paperwork about this.
I didn't have to change it.
But you didn't give it to me last week.
I didn't have it.
You didn't give it to me last week either, when we were sitting right here, same place last week, I said, I said you hadn't given me anything, and asked you to drop those things off. Right, and you weren't. She, and we already established that the clerk doesn't do that. So I asked you two, and they said, do we have, does the.
In a microphone, go for it, I'll talk.
I'm gonna ask Mauro, do you have a problem with the department heads providing the individual commissioners' copies? I'm going to request that they do that, given the fact that that you won't instruct the clerk to give me the hand, you know, hard copies that he brings in, and she doesn't email them to us. Can we make sure that the department heads give them to us?
I have no problem with that, but I don't, the problem is.
That's what we said last week, too.
Problem is, Commissioner, I'm not gonna make department heads do something for you.
It's for all of us.
I get the copies, I come to the workshops and look at them, and they're emailed to us, Herm Brewer emailed everything to us.
It's in, but he, the person who's in charge of maintenance is supposed to provide them to us, they were not emailed with our agendas, that's all.
Herm Brewer emailed the entire board, all, everything we need to know about this.
Right.
With his personal emails back and forth to the contractors. Everything.
With the agenda item, though, that is being submitted, everything's supposed to be in one place, when we have three hundred.
Our first emails and stuff really didn't even need to be submitted at that point, he went above and beyond.
What I'm saying is when we have, sometimes, it's usually between one and three hundred emails a week, and we're looking at our agenda that we don't get, and so.
That's why we get paid a hundred thousand dollars a year to go through those emails.
Right, but we don't get our agenda until the day before the meeting, and when we get the agenda the day before the meeting, that's when we know what's actually going to be voted on.
This was discussed last Tuesday, a whole week in advance, eight days in advance.
I understand, but even last week, none of those things were furnished to us, we established that last week.
They were established through an email.
Okay, so there is a ranking, or a grading, or a bid opening, or any type of, was there anything done as normally occurs that shows a breakdown of the bidders? Because I didn't receive anything like that.
There did not need to be that, and it was under seventy-five thousand dollars.
It was an open, it was an open bid, there was no sealed bids involved. Herm Brewer took the three contractors that were in question through his building. I assisted Herm Brewer in putting this onto the agenda.
Okay.
So.
You did, so then my question is, why were, why were you advocating to put, why were you advocating for?
After further discussion yesterday with Herm Brewer and the the tradesmen that showed up yesterday, there was errors in either mine and/or Herm's explanations to the commissioners with their agenda items, so we then decided to go with the lowest bidder, because in the first place, Coats Construction did not submit any scope of work in their job, which was rectified through a conversation we had yesterday, and you could go back and listen to it, and we hashed it out, we worked it out, we made it work. That's what we're doing.
I'm just trying to figure out why you were advocating, what, no, I.
I'm not advocating anybody, but I'm just trying to get a job done.
You were advocating, you put the agenda to put the person who wasn't the low bidder, and I just, I have a.
And again, and then Mr. Herm Brewer was with me as well in this decision, it wasn't just mine. It was a combined decision, and then we brought it yesterday to the board, you canceled it last week, we brought it again because we did not submit, did not submit any other work performance of the job description that they were gonna do, and again, we hashed it out yesterday.
Yeah, you don't, if it is the, if you are requesting a quote, and it says what you're asking for, then that is the scope of work, when they respond.
We had an architect detail the scope of work, so the scope of work didn't need to be.
Exactly.
Done and reiterated.
But there was a, realized that, there's Mr. Brewer's mistake, he thought that they did, that Coats did not submit their scope of work, and when we established, it was already established by the architect, so Coats should qualify, then that made him the most qualifying low bid.
Through discussion, through the discussion.
That's where he changed his mind. And Commissioner Cannon-Lace and myself both recommended they do that, to stay in line with past practice of lowest bid on that, if they all qualified equally, which state we established they did, because Mr. Brewer did not know that they did.
Commissioners? This is Herm Brewer. Hey, yeah, so, so actually, I did know that the scope of work didn't have to be detailed, but we got a prosecutor's opinion last June that said that since the low bid at that time was under fifty thousand, which was the threshold for the bid process, that we should seek, we should seek to do the open bid process, because there was the chance of cost overruns. That's why we did not feel comfortable with the low bid that didn't detail anything. So it wasn't really that I didn't understand. I did understand, but having heard the prosecutor's opinion, and under the assumption that there could be cost overruns, because that, that description that they provided wasn't very detailed, I felt comfortable with the fact that one, one bid was, was three thousand dollars more, but that one was very detailed. So that's what the, that's the explanation of why we felt more comfortable with the other one at the time. But having heard what the, the trade said yesterday, fully understand. As long as Coats isn't gonna provide us with any cost overruns, because I don't want to have to come back to you guys with change orders, because now we're up above that, the, the, the next bid. So that was the only reason.
Well, well, and just because the other two contractors detailed their scope of work, or reiterated the scope of work, basically, that the architect had, doesn't mean that they're gonna not have changeovers either. So, so, so that's something to consider. I think it was just a matter of- I think it was just a matter of, you know, that, that Coats felt that, and rightfully so, that happens in construction. If the, if the architect details the scope of work, they don't have to resubmit the scope of work, or reiterate it, is my point.
Understood.
And the threshold has been raised since that time, too, so really, he could have picked any of the three, and it would have been us to decide to approve or not approve.
Do we have something from the prosecutor's office in here today?
Yeah.
Because that's one of the other questions I have is, you do still have to make sure that your procurement policy is congruent with what the new changes by the law, because even though it says it's a seventy-five thousand dollar threshold, it was raised from fifty, every political subdivision has the ability to make it less. So we do need to make sure that our internal policies reflect that, and I've been asking to find that out, or to see when the, when and if the board, because the Board of Commissioners has to be the ones to approve the procurement policy. So I haven't still seen that, but Prosecutor's Office mentions change in law without mentioning the fact that, of what our current procurement policy says, and so that, that's been concerning me since the seventy-five thousand dollar was made the increase, so.
But, but just to be clear, the Prosecutor's Office is not gonna advise us as to our own procurement policies unless there's something illegal about them. You know what I mean?
That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying, do we, is it currently, it, does our current procurement policy coincide with the change in the law? That's what I'm trying to find out, because no one had, someone gave me a copy of a sample of one that someone was working on. So I, I'd like to make my, my vote, yes, but contention upon it coinciding with our current procurement policy.
So I need to take the vote for item twenty-five. Mister Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mister Malloy?
Yes.
Miss Frenchco?
Yes, as long as our current procurement policy coincides with the seventy-five thousand dollar increase the state provides.
Item twenty-six is to execute letters of support to Senator Sandra O'Brien and Senator Matt Dolan in support of the Bloomfield Township Trustee's request for an addition to their regional EMF fire station, which was included in House Bill two and is now in the Senate for discussion, and to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Commissioners, to execute said letters on behalf of the board.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mister Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mister Malloy?
Yes.
Miss Frenchco?
Yes.
Number twenty-seven, I'll go ahead and read. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mister Mark Bodo as a member of the Trumbull County Children's Services Board for one three-year term, commencing January one, two thousand and twenty-four, and ending December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-six.
I'll second it. In discussion, just really quickly, I, I think that all three candidates are, are very worthwhile, and their backgrounds lend themselves perfectly to serve on this board. It was a really difficult decision, but I'll second it for purposes of moving this along.
And the reason I'm recommending Mister Bodo, and I believe, I agree with you, Commissioner, all three candidates are worthy and qualified for this. I, I think Mister Bodo brings a unique skill set. He's in charge of Northeast Ohio Human Trafficking Task Force. He's rescued hundreds of women, young women and young boys even, that have been forced into slavery, prostitution, abandonment. He's even had children that have been sold by their parents, so he has a unique skill set of a career in law enforcement dealing with this. He's a school board member in Weathersfield Township. Very deep-rooted family man. I, I interviewed him again. I talked to him last night and this morning. He wants to do this. He's gonna be retiring from the state, and he wants to stay active in using his skill set of what he's been trained his whole life for, and he hopes to be able to bring that to Children's Services Board from a law enforcement background, and what he knows all over the country, and, and dealing with these crime rings, and, and having placed women with church groups and other groups, trying to find these women, they get on where they need to go in foster families. I think he'll be a great asset of something that I don't see that we have any other board members with that unique skill set there, that I think he could be a, a big asset to Trumbull County, having him be on our team.
And I'll be completely honest, Commissioner, he's not my first selection, but for purposes of unity and, and moving this along, I will go along.
My first one is Rogeri. Is that yours?
That's mine, yeah.
Whereas I prefer to make a motion over that, because this, we have to, even though he has a unique skill set, I think this is the individual who has most relevance experience, and I, I'd like to make a mo-
Well, we have a motion on the table in a second already.
I'd like to make a motion to amend that to, and, and change it to Christina Rogeri.
Okay, I'll second, and I, I don't want to get into the, you know, let's, let's battle over these board members. They're all, they're all very qualified. I will, because I do feel very strongly about Miss Rogeri, and she was my first selection. I will, I will second that, and we can move that along as well. And, and Mister Bodo can be on for the next appointment if he chooses to.
Miss Frenchco?
Yes.
Mister Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mister Malloy?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I always try to pick who makes the most sense, even if there are other ones who are-
I know they're, they're all, they're all great candidates. That's the thing.
Item number twenty-eight is to adopt resolution for the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to authorize payment of county funds to DLZ Ohio, Inc. in the amount of thirty thousand dollars for partial payment for Warren Township's agreement for professional services for the Levitsburg Dam Desktop Study Regarding the Trumbull County Metro Parks Levitsburg Dam Removal Project.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Mister Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mister Malloy?
Yes.
Miss Frenchco?
Yes.
Okay, agenda item number twenty-five, I'll make a motion to, twenty-nine, I'm sorry, to enter into, I'll make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to RC one-twenty-one dot twenty-two G three to confer with an attorney to discuss pending and imminent court actions. My motion.
Well, second it. In discussion, this is a executive session. It's only for Commissioner Cannon-Lace and myself.
What is it, wait?
It's regarding your lawsuit against us and the board, so it's, it's us conferring with our attorney to discuss.
Which lawsuit are you talking about?
The one with the open, open records.
Open meeting and record destruction?
No, well, open meetings is what I'm involved in.
Well, my concern is that you might be talking with him about other matters that don't relate to just specifically that case.
You can have the concern all you want. We're not, and we know how to do executive session, what the scope is allowed to-
Related to, to that, not any other matters.
That's the only matter we're discussing, is his findings. He met with Judge McKay the other day, and-
Yes, he did, and it was, it was unfortunate that it was recognized by even the board's legal counsel that the board was being unreasonable, and that, that's sad, because-
We believe the plaintiff is being unreasonable, so we'll leave it at that, and let's-
Because, in, in a, in a case, hang on, no, wait, I'm still talking. In a case such, in a case such as this, the legal fees are paid for by the, by the defendant, should they win, and they are continuing to rack up legal fees on behalf of the county and the defendant, knowing that there are losing claims there, that are clearly losing, and, and they are, they, they are costing the county money by not making an effort to-
Can we call the vote, please?
Mister Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mister Malloy?
Yes.
Miss Frenchco?
Yes. Or, I mean, wait, I take that back. Stain? Stain, I think.
Back again, too.
Okay. Because I think it's because it relates to- I thought it was a strange text from me this morning.
Yeah, I was, that was all my fault. No, no, but it was just here. It should be there. That's essential, right? Yes. That was looking up. Chill. Fix the, fix the ease on.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, well, we're still struggling. Oh, yeah, that's, uh- And the, say, get water.
Is it the top?
And it's that one.
Okay. Yeah?
Yeah.
That's exactly what David said.
I assume that's-
You can call David and ask him if he said that, and he'll probably give you that quote. David, is this your quote?
You're right. Okay, cool. I assume that's important, but-
Yeah.
My attorney on the open, open meetings and record destruction case said that the only one costing the county money are the commissioners, because what would happen, and like, we're exposed, knowing that they destroyed records, haven't fulfilled, haven't done their meetings, haven't taken any decisions, or, or something that relates to that, and huge loss. There's injunction, you know. Basically, the outcome of this would be that anytime they violate in the future, they will automatically have to pay the law. So I don't want to get the ball rolling on that, because then subsequent mistakes still, you know, it's kind of like, hey, you guys got trouble for this resort. Also, you can let him know. You can ask Brian Ames about this, because he's the person who's the defendant in that case, and I'm a, or I'm sorry, a plaintiff, and I'm a full plaintiff. You can file something for, I think that there's an automatic release for the person for like five hundred dollars, and it's a very easy, good per se, so Brian Ames told me about that. It's pretty bad, so you send a public number, they just completely leave. The other thing, I figured I would let her know when I'm going. To respond to me about an EDA process. They've already hired an attorney, minimum hours, four hours, so she's got at least four hours in EDA, I don't know. They also contacted, and they, they hired Alex, the HR pro, who hasn't responded. There's no process in place. There's no, nothing. They haven't replied to our requests. And they're just talking about money, and more money, and more money. Why? Because they want to be petty with everything. They want to be petty with me, and then as soon as- I complain, which I might. They're going to get solid with the twenty-five thousand dollar. So that was your tax money. These two are spending tens and tens of thousands of dollars. In order to prevent staff. Um, my accommodations requests are nothing more than asking the staff to do what they have already done. And just quit doing. Right before I went on vacation. So I get my agenda. The day before the meeting. It's not enough time for me. I've been making do with. Kita show that I have. Because they give me everything behind. So I can look at the agenda items. That's. On page. Now, they are telling me to look on that. And I'm. Isn't always there. We get up to three hundred emails. A week. I get the agenda that they give. So I'm playing matchup. To these things. And. It's in a time crunch. I did. And I. I came in one night to go over evenings, to go over everything. I couldn't. I couldn't do it. I could. I couldn't do it. I was having. A. Block. I take. Sorry. And I did. Putting it into boxes. Um. And, yeah, really. I. I have notes. I've posted. Do those things in a time crunch. So I'm just asking, and I have. Like. So I'm like. Give me what you've been giving me in paper copy so that I can go over them and not be looking at a screen and trying to match things up and getting. My grades. And they're saying no. So because they just don't. To be kind. At. On the evening, which they should do to me. Even valid. This is a convention because human beings should just be kind and respect people. Physicians. Costing the county. And. Well, they're just because they want them to say no. They're not. This. They've been refusing. Basically. Two very basic things. I'm. Asking to give you printed copies of the agenda. So I can review them and have them light. And I also have to have my feet elevated. So if I'm sitting at the computer, then the. Printing itself, you imagine having a. Yeah. That is. I just have my feet here underneath, twisted up like a pretzel. And just sipping on something with salt to keep my blood pressure. Um. And then last week, they had the identity. Adacity to tell them to quit. And resign and get disability. Just because you have a condition doesn't mean that you're disabled or fully disabled. The discrimination is. What's it going to take is one person at the county with a real disability. Like. That's been. Like. Hidden or, I don't know, like. I don't know, mine's invisible. Maybe. Like obvious. I don't know. It's always going to take some, and I don't mean to say real. But maybe someone's been. An over. Like. Disability as opposed to a hidden one. Um, I don't. The two. One of them complains and says that they think that they must still work in the environment here. Uh, because. Because the commissioners are discriminating against me. Really, what you told me to stand on my head. Your paws is postural orthostat. Have. Or your center. Or your heart rate. Use up to. More than thirty beats a minute. So it could be to the one hundred to two hundred just by changing, changing positions. And a lot of it has to do with your head positioning. So for him to say, stand on your head to read something. Knowing that that's the condition I have. And it would cause me to pass out. Is. Evil. It's discriminatory. It's nasty. And even if I can't sue them, I'm. I am really leaning towards why I leave the plane for good measure. Because people should not be allowed to treat somebody that way. Until the older. Basic needs to do the job. Um, from them because of a physical. Um, the other thing was bringing back documents in the office to review. They actually created. To start. On bringing back. So not only did they not make an accommodation. What I requested one last time. Which I mean. I just. I have a hard time standing and looking down and looking at. I can't do that. I have to actually sit down with my feet out of. Review the document. Made a policy saying this can't happen. Do that. But I still do sometimes, you know, for the other guys or through something important. Um, I'm asking them to give me the printed paperwork to use in advance. So that I have an opportunity to go through it and not freaking out the night before. And it. Trying to pollute everyone. But they. They enjoy. They enjoy being cool. I mean, everything that I'm asking for something that will be done. In the last. Year since I came. Now they're trying to hire an open. It's turning. In order to handle this, and I don't even know if it's purview. It could be that they're trying to do damage control. Because. Danny. See seed. An attorney that had nothing to do with my. ADA results. And losing. And then none of that stuff should be shared with anyone. So. People are horrible. I mean, just, I ask you all to remember. And just because Maro's. Doesn't mean that. He is not complicit. Also has to do, you know, and say. You know what? I don't want to cost the county money and I don't want to be an. So this is just me. Yes. Let's do better, Danny. Has that ever happened one time since you've seen him? Now, he's toned down his abusive language and demeanor. Since he's up for reelection and he has a great challenge. Uh, to move or not. So that's what he's coming down. Just because he's not opening. Facilitate. The only thing I know that I'm getting compensated for is the. Wrong. I appreciate the violation. That's a given. The question is the amount. I believe that all of them need to pay individually. That they shouldn't get away with having an insurance provider swoop in and cover all of their sins. Not okay. Each of them needs to be reaching into their pockets, their bank accounts. To pay something. Of course, my attorney. That's. Days and. For what they've done. No one's fooled by. Yeah, a lot of people are. It's. It comes off really sweet, but. It's not. I mean, it was. When. When the. And he turned back. And it's a very good. That's when I. Sounds like. I'm making this like he was going to hit me a couple of times. And then sitting on. Like. I was like. Holy crap. Tell me where the user is. Sorry. No, I'm looking at these to see. What's on comments. I still have to talk to Rebecca. I want to know where you live in Arizona. I love Arizona. Like, Sedona. It's my favorite. City there. Yeah, so. EE. I'm sorry. Not EE. Yeah. The Ohio Civil Rights Commission covers the. Accommodations. Even though. They do. It's the. Action. And it. You're entitled to it as an employee. And as a member of the public. So if you're a member of the public and say, I don't count as an employee. You can still. That's right. And I say, you know, there's. Every time. I'm in. Um, because of some issues that happened. Before. Getting. It absolutely makes me feel anxious when I'm around these guys, right? Uh, and I want to follow along from home. Any member of the public would be able to ask for those things as a reasonable combination. To participating in public. So I think that's where they're. They're missing. And. An attorney might make it. And say it's a case of first impression because I don't think that the original intention about. Was to exclude elected officials. Because. You know, that's not. I mean, that's not the intention. Of the ADA. So. Be interesting to find out. What happens, but either way. You don't. Win or lose. You don't have to spend tens of thousands of dollars of taxpayers' money. Also have to do. With me, a company staff. The day before the workshop. That's all. It's what they were already doing, but it's just doing it a day. Or an evening earlier. I can come in on Monday evening. Call up. Good. And then I could sit back. I used to try to sit back in my office and re. And review at the same time. Or I could review from home. I just don't feel comfortable. Being at home.
It's just mine or is it yours? Did I leave my agenda? US left it.
Yeah.
Do you hear? You want this? It's all that it. Morrow, it's just the one page here.
Hey. Make a motion to reconvene from executive session pursuant to RC one twenty-one dot twenty-two. G three to confer with an attorney to discuss pending and imminent court actions.
Second the motion?
Against La Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Brunchow.
I'll abstain because it relates to me. And then, um. I'd like to. Have some discussion with the board. About some. New. I call it new business. And I could probably craft a motion. And it, and. In past experience, it's been that Commissioner Malloy has been the least reasonable about this. So I, I'm gonna. Direct this to Commissioner Cantala Mesa. Um. I.
We saw item thirty-one.
I can't.
Wait till.
No, because it could prevent the county from spending money where they don't need to. And I, I'm hopeful that Commissioner Cantala Mesa would. Um, want to consider that.
Can we finish the agenda, though?
No, because if you do that. Um, if you vote yes on that, it might, you, you're going to be spending three hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour for something that you might not have to spend a penny on if I actually explain. And can get your consensus.
Okay.
So, um. Okay, so let me, let me do this. Okay, so let me, let me do this so that we can see here. So I, I have made a request and I've requested to have printed copies of the. Agenda, just as they were done previously and.
We are going to go along with agenda item number thirty-one. I know you're trying to build your case here, but I'm not going to do that.
It's not about, it's not about building a case.
On to agenda item thirty-one.
Wait, wait, I'm, I'm going to make a motion from the floor then. I'm going to make a motion to cause. The clerk to provide printed copies of the agenda. The date and the backup material. Two days. I'm sorry, the Monday before, the Monday afternoon before the meeting. For the purpose of eliminating. The necessity for the commissioners to continue to hire outside counsel and potentially. Have a course.
Commissioner, this is your ADA request. We need to be protected.
This is my, this was my, my motion's on the floor. Can you please read it, clerk? Again.
Nobody's seconded.
I, I know. I made a motion. I'm asking you to, to reread it. You still need to have that as part of the record if someone makes a motion, even if it dies. So can you please read that?
You have the need to say it again. You were hearing and honing.
He's the eye video. I'll get it verbatim off that.
Can we please continue with the agenda?
A motion as a clerk, you should be taking note of it in case you have to read it again or amend it or change it. So I'm going to. I'm going to read this again. And this is a motion to require the. Commissioner's office staff to provide. Any commissioner at their request, specifically me. Written and printed copy of the agenda and supporting backup documentation the Monday before. The meeting, the day before the workshop in essence, not even twenty-four hours before it, for the purpose of preventing the county from. Spending money in legal fees and a potential. Course deductible. That is my motion.
Do a second. Do a second. Without hearing a second, the motion will not be considered. Item thirty-one.
Item number thirty-one is to appoint Attorney Brody Conover and Bricker Grayton LLP pursuant to RC three zero nine point zero nine C. And RC three zero five point one four B as counsel for the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners. To provide legal research, advice and consulting relative to an ADA request by a Trumbull County official at the rate of three seventy-five per hour.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
And then I.
Mr. Cancel Mesa.
Discussion.
Discussion.
This is completely unnecessary.
This was recommended by the prosecutor's office in an email to all three commissioners in response to requests from Human Resources Department. For question, Human Resources reached out to the labor attorneys. They reached out to, to Corsa and reached out to. The County Commissioners Association of Ohio, and they all said they couldn't answer that question. They needed to get outside counsel for that. They went to our prosecutor. He said he couldn't answer it because he represents. Many entities in the county and he recommended that we hire outside counsel to get the answer that Human Resources is looking for.
So the labor, so there is already a labor consultant that works for a minimum of four hours.
Correct. And they denied the, to answer it. They said that they can advise, but not on this topic.
They, they denied to answer it and they, they, but you've already spent the money there. You've got your premier HR director. Who is learning on the job, who clearly doesn't know how to respond to this. You've got the other two who haven't responded. In there and none of these jobs, you know, like they make her Becky an assistant director or whatever they created for without advertising. And there's just happens to be no one in the county who's able to respond to this.
And no kidding in the County Commissioners Association that represents all eighty-eight counties, three commissioners, they couldn't answer it either.
Right, because it's so ridiculous.
Right. They said it's the most ridiculous request they've ever gotten and they don't know how to handle it because they've never got that from a commissioner.
It is because nowhere in, nowhere in the state of Ohio will you find two commissioners who are instructing staff not to provide any support or help.
That's not true.
To the commissioner, to one of the members of the board.
It's not true.
That's not true.
They gave you two or three days during office hours to do it. And then you refused and then you turned around and said that I retract it, which I didn't.
Okay.
I offered to show you how to hit print and, and organize the packet with you.
And you, and you have every single thing that the other two commissioners get emailed, everything.
Put it together in paper format and you.
With you, not for you, with you. Then I said that I would help you.
In the email, in the public, in the public meeting, that's not what you said. Either way, this is.
I did in writing to you in response to your email.
Right, in writing. I'm not going to argue with you. There's a, there's a video of the meeting where you said that you would do it because you didn't want the staff to have to do anything to help me.
No, it wasn't the staff's duty. And I said, if it's going to be somebody's duty.
Staff has been doing it for years.
They never did it for me once. I've been here a year and a half, not one time.
So that they've been, and everyone works differently and they work differently for different reasons.
Commissioner, have they done it for you? No. Say in the last year and a half.
But they've been.
On this board.
They've been doing this for me since I've, for years now.
Let me remind you, you've done nothing but complain about it.
And they've gotten overtime for it. We put an end to that.
And when you're given things, you accuse them of not getting them.
Let's, let's see if that's true. So at any rate, I'm asking them to do exactly what they were doing. There's a, a actual physical hard copy and alls I'm asking is that they give me a copy of it so that I could prepare. And if no one wants to do that and you two would rather spend.
That is not what we're saying here.
Shame on you both.
That is not what we're saying here. You're saying that. We need to protect the county from further exposure from you.
We, I just made a motion that would prevent you from even having to spend money and.
Who's to say you're, who's to say you're going to change that motion and you're going to, you're going to ask for different things. We need to be protected. This county needs to be protected against any and all. Exposure that you're, that you're eliciting here.
Protected?
Yes.
Well, then why don't you just treat people civilly and decently and allow staff to work. Allow staff.
Commissioner, you've called everybody your name.
Allow staff to.
You go on Facebook and you call all of us names and you talk about civil and united and working together. Please stop. It's comical.
You have an ability to save the county money, Mauro. Will you do that?
You have the ability to save the county money. You are initiating this, Commissioner. We have to protect the county. That's per the recommendation of the prosecutor's office. If you have an issue with it, take it up with them.
He's, they're only recommending it because internally the HR department doesn't want to be decent.
Again, that is your opinion. You discuss it with the prosecutor's office.
Hey, I'll take the vote for item thirty-one.
County so much money.
Mr. Cancel Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
No. Ridiculous to waste money when you. Alls you have to do is what you've been doing for two years.
We're using collaborative software. That is what you have been asking for since twenty twenty-one.
That's going to save a lot of time and money.
Of using collaborative software.
Okay, that concludes our regular agenda items for Wednesday, May first.
Um, I, there's also an agenda item that's supposed to be added that I requested to be added, but the clerk didn't put it on yet. And she says that she's, first she said she wasn't going to, then she said.
No, that's not true. You did not give me the language.
Exactly. I didn't give you the language because that is the job of the assistant. Pardon me? What did you say?
We have a process and a procedure now.
You said because you don't know how to do it?
I provided you with the action you wanted to rescind. And you need to create the language. And I said I would put it on at least three or four times. I told you I would put it on.
The clerk.
You did not provide it.
The clerk provides the language for agenda items related to.
Is it filled out? Is it filled out correctly on the, with all the background information, everything? Oh, we don't do that. Everyone else is supposed to, but we're not now?
We sat in here and discussed this about a month ago where I said, I am concerned now. That our staff will use the new system as a method to not help put things on the agenda that need. Uploaded correctly. And Alex said, no, the assistants are. Are, are to do those things. She explicitly said that. We had a full discussion about that, that that wasn't the intention. Yet she's using the software, the fact that it exists, not to. Craft the language for rescinding a journal action. That is.
Have to provide the language.
I don't.
I put it, I put an item on for Mr. Malloy and he provided the language.
He provided the language. Yes. Why do we have a clerk then? If the clerk that.
As Commissioner, if she puts it on incorrectly, you're going to say that she did it incorrectly.
No, she.
So if you, that will ensure that you get your point across when you, when you have an, an agenda item to put on. That's all.
Okay, so the, the, so then I will come back there with you to fulfill the records request that I made of all of the past agenda items that were rescinded. And then I will dictate it to you so that you can put it on there. Just as you have had Commissioner Malloy dictate things for you to do here publicly on reporting. I'm sure that you'd be willing to do that for me, right?
If you have a reasonable request as someone in the scope of her duties, any employee is supposed to do their duties.
And she doesn't.
And if they don't, bring it to the attention of the board. The majority of the board will decide whether that fits within their job description or not.
Commissioner, there are emails where Lisa is telling you, please provide me the language and I will put it on for you.
Know the language for rescinding journal action.
Then, then ask the prosecutor. He will assist in that.
Why you even want to rescind an item? You have to tell me.
The language has to be specific to what you want.
This is the item that I would like rescinded. Please put it on the agenda the proper way as you've done with.
You didn't even have the item. I had to provide it. I had to find it and provide it.
Correct. That's what your job is.
Uh huh. And I gave it to you and you're supposed to write the agenda item. You're, you're supposed to.
Do you know how terrible you are of just a, just a.
I'm sure if this is going to continue, I'm going to motion.
Yeah, we were going to make, as a matter of fact. Yes.
On the line.
Ms. Frenchco.
You cannot adjourn a meeting to stop someone from speaking. I hope that Brody Conover is on here. Why don't you tell your email or email your attorney?
When it gets out of line, Commissioner, read the Roberts Rules of Orders. When things get out of line, what happens? I advise you to read that. I just read it this morning, actually. And I'll be happy to provide a copy to you. Once you start slandering and harassing and going in that direction, we're not going to stand for, we're not going to put the board at risk of any more liability. By putting an employee in a situation where they may have to file a lawsuit against the board again. Because of your actions. That's, that's upon the advice of our attorney. So.
I think the whole, you know, maybe she's just acting like this because she lost. Okay.
He lost.
You lost. Okay. Great. If anyone wants to make a recreation request for her investigation at the, at the, when she worked for. The engineers in this, please do.
Hello, Dylan.
There's an investigation that shows the.
I know that.